Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 14 regular meeting of Stanley County Board of Commissioners. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you will join me in invocation and then join us as we do our pledge. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight asking for forgiveness for our many sins. Lord, please be with us tonight as we go into this meeting. Be with us as we make the right decisions for Stanley County. Be with all our men and women in uniform, Lord. Be with the ones that are at sea, Lord. Be with the ones that are in foreign countries fighting for our freedom. Lord, be with us. Go with us. Guide and direct us in everything that we do. Amen.
Amen. [applause] [inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone's had a chance to review the agenda. Is there any adjustments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I would respectfully request item 2C be renumbered to item 2B and move B down. I feel that that conversation should happen before the other.
I second that. Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to exchange item B and C on item 2. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item 1, presentation of Stanley County Schools budget request for fiscal year 2018-19. Presenter is Dr. Jeff James, our school superintendent. Good evening, Dr. James.
Good evening, Chairman Burleson and Commissioners. Thank you for having us tonight. So tonight, we come before you to propose our 2018-19 budget. And first and foremost, we appreciate all the help that the county provides for our school system. Without you, it would be impossible to do some of the things we do. So hopefully, tonight, we'll share some information with you you can be proud of. So first and foremost, our school system actually uses the five strategic goals that our state uses, and then we build our strategic plan off these goals. So the main goal, of course, is to prepare future-ready students. Budgets, of course, are a key component to make this a reality. Our future students will continue to see technological advancements beyond our current state. So it is imperative that a sound, basic education provide access to technology and training to prepare future-ready schools. As federal and state per pupil funding declines, it leaves the burden on local government to ensure an education. The budget requested aims at providing enough funding to ensure student access to an education. And of course, the key component to any productive education system is the teacher, an effective teacher. Bill and Gloria Gates spent over $1 billion to come to the conclusion that we all know the quality of the teacher in a classroom is what makes or breaks the future of that student in that classroom. So it's important that we fund our teachers, provide them supplements that keep them in our district. So of course, local funding helps by providing these incentives and helps us attract qualified candidates. This, of course, is goal 2 of our strategic plan. Another goal, growing in importance in our society, is providing and maintaining safe learning environments. Capital funding is needed to add additional safety features at each of our schools. Moving on to goal 4, engaging community and other stakeholders. It simply does take a village to educate a child. We simply need additional funds to encourage our community through media and other means. A school system does not exist, nor can it, in isolation. Funding to market engage our community is a key component of a successful education system. And last but not least, 21st century systems is designed to make sure classrooms are equipped with technology as our future students will live in a world of rapid technological advancement and need the skills to navigate this future. Again, a key issue with funding is to keep our technology up to date. Of course, some of the things we're exploring within our budget to try to market our school system and improve access to various additional educational endeavors. We spoke about this at our school board meeting prior Tuesday, two Tuesdays ago. Of course, our main goal is to be physically responsible. And coming into the job in February, after being named in February, the next morning, I provided the school board with a physical urgency plan that was also shared with the county commissioners. And we have diligently worked that plan. While the media would say that we were $900,000 in debt, that we needed help supporting that from the county commissioners, we're actually about $785,000, which is still a great need. But we implemented that plan with the school board's approval and backing, and were able to work diligently together with the many people in central office and our leadership to come up with a plan to make sure we were solvent, able to pay our bills at the end of the year. So we sat down on March 26 with the county commissioners, presenting you with that plan and where we were at. I don't have an exact figure for you tonight, but we will be in the black for this budget. So that was a great feat that we accomplished through working together as a team and putting our heads together, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. But we are exploring international backalart program, advanced placement academy, an NC Arts Plus School, and another cooperative innovative high school since. Pfeiffer is planning a health and human service program for masters and physician's assistant. It only makes good sense that we're preparing our kids to go into that program in the future through Stanley Community College, Pfeiffer's bachelor program, and then stepping into that masters in OTPT and, of course, physician's assistant, which are all fields that are STEM-related and jobs in the future that will need to be filled if you look at the data. Dual immersion is another venture we're going to embark upon. This would actually be implemented at Indy. It would provide our students with a true dual-language immersion, starting with Spanish in kindergarten. So we're looking at doing those, some of those, next year. Some of them have about a year and a half wait period. So we'll talk to our board once we get the approval to move forward at our next board meeting, and we'll let you know what we're doing in those areas. So proposed budgets for 2018 and 19. So here's some reductions we're already facing that we have received from state. Central office will be cut additional $24,000 next year. Teacher assistance will be cut again next year, $219,254. Classroom supply, $681. Career technical support, $3,199. And of course, textbooks will be cut, $65,146. So the first cuts we're facing from the state total $313,213. And there'll be additional restrictions placed upon ABC transfers. We have close to 10,000 program resource codes that we deal with. They're state, federal, and local money. And of course, you cannot go across those lines when you're transferring money. So there's a lot to keep up with in our budget. We were afforded some transfers from different funds with inside those particular parameters, federal to federal, state to state, and of course, local to local. So this year, we were able to use that flexibility and to apply for $1,729,187 in waivers. And if you'll see there, the textbooks and digital resources will be locked down next year. You will not be able to waive those funds. Reduction in federal funding. We actually lost rural and low-income school funding because of the increase in economic development in the area. Jobs, our ratio is like 4.1% unemployment. So that hurt us in rural and low-income, so we lost that funding. That's $179,000. So here's what gets us, of course, as it does you as commissioners when you're looking at other budgets throughout the county. Our retirement rate is increasing from 17.13 to 18.44. So that means we will incur an additional $585,507. And of course, hospitalization is going up from 5,869 to 6,104 for an additional $273,606 in cost. Again, a total cost of $859,113. So we're at $1 million, if not above, already in additional costs for next year. So funds needed. State dollars, of course, we were cut. We just went through those. And if you look at it, we're basically going to be cut, looking at next year, about $3 million if you consider the ABC transfer restrictions. Take that out, about $1.3 million. That we will start next year already, that much further in debt. So of course, estimated adjustments. What we're doing is aligning our teacher allotment with our class sizes. We estimate $417,000 there. We will gain 5.5 additional positions that we already have employed with the K-3 allotment law that's going into effect, $286,698. And of course, EC certified positions. We are, again, adjusting our allotments there. So we anticipate that about $1.1 million in savings through this. So how our state funds are spent, and of course, you know, there's a lot of rhetoric about, I guess, shutting schools down or consolidating schools, but as you see right here, most of our cost is in salaries and benefits. It's not in buildings. So 91%, of course, of our state budget is consumed with salaries and benefits, and the rest is left for instructional supplies, some EC services, software, et cetera. So our state budget for next year is $57,437,680. Local funds are spent, of course, again, 48.5% of local funds are spent in salary for And in 51.5% of that's operational expenses. We do have to have or make charter school payments, especially for the students that have left us and went to charter schools. Travel, staff development, membership dues, contracting, coach supplements, contracted services, another $6,165,404. So the total local budget that we're anticipating for next year is $11,970,538. So currently, the local county appropriation, or what we're looking for next year, $10,987,738. Article 44, we're looking at $500,000 there. Teacher supplement grant that the county's been giving us, $240,800. And of course, fines and forfeitures have been running about $240,000. So federal funds. Again, salaries, 85.2% salaries and benefits. We do have some instructional supplies in and out of federal. Staff development, software, and some travel. So the federal budget's $5,265,496. And we do have fund date, which has some dollars in it, not a whole lot. Again, 97.5% are salaries and benefits, $361,729. And supplies, travel, pre-K meals, $9,238. Capital request, $2,798,500 for next year. And Sean has a presentation he'll go through while we're asking for some additional capital supports. I will tell you that economic development, here's two studies that have been done, and there's hundreds out there. Economic development, if you read these studies and studies that have been done over the last 25 years, a public education system has a direct impact on the economy in any community. So it behooves us to work together as a team to make sure we have the most effective public education system we can have. And here's two articles you can read. Actually, Jim Merle, retired superintendent from Wake County, was also superintendent in Virginia Beach, Virginia, and actually contracted a study that had some interesting results. For every dollar invested in Virginia Beach, Virginia, $1.53 was pulled back into the economy by investing in public schools. So I don't know about you, but if I can get a 53% return on my money, I will invest tomorrow. So finance study. This is available, and I'll send this. The board should have this presentation. If not, we'll be glad to send it back out to you. If you look at the local finance study that was done in North Carolina, of course, here's what comes into effect. We know that the mountain areas and the beach have real estate values that are much greater than us. So what happens when you're taxing real estate to gain tax dollars, there's a disparity. So the land that's valued more, of course, brings in more tax dollars. And you can see where we're at. We're actually in the third quartile in the state. So here is a current spending per student 2014-15 study. The actual state average per pupil local funding was $1,537. And if you look at Stanley, we're around $1,135. So this is just comparison to local funding. There may be some additional dollars that we receive outside of what these are here, but still, you're looking at about $400 per pupil, which just roughly would be about another $3.2 million, which is understandably, there's no way you guys could fund that. But just wanted to show where we were in comparison. Just make mention that Montgomery County next to us is funding at $1,236, and that is a tier-one economically distressed county. So here's another chart that shows the 10 highest spending counties and the 10 lowest, then where Stanley County stacks up. If you go to unemployment, of course, we see that Stanley is down near the bottom for unemployment rate. So what we did was take surrounding school districts and looked at what their per pupil funding was and looked at what Stanley's was. So if you look at spending per ADM, Stanley is ranked just above Anson and Richmond. So if you look at our EOG scores, if you'll notice, that we're significantly higher than quite a few counties. So if I put my business lens on, what I would say is the county's getting a good return on investment because you're spending less per pupil, but you're getting a greater educational return than the other counties that are spending more. So we are putting your dollars to wise use. I will assure you, if funding ADM would go up, you would see that needle for Stanley move further to the left. We're not quite at the state average. I would say any goal for a superintendent would be at or above state average. So we definitely want to look at getting there. Out of 100 counties, we're ranked 58 educationally, and we should be somewhere in the 30s. It can be accomplished, I believe, with the leadership we currently have on the board and in place. It's not hard to get to that point with the right funding. So again, if you look at the finance study, we compared EOGs to current ADM. You notice on the right, our EOG scores are fifth. We're actually placed sixth, excuse me, on the chart going to the left, where we're third towards the bottom in funding. So again, a good return on your investment. And if you look here, this is the county's revenue per ADM versus what we get per ADM. So the county's actually taken in $3,916 per ADM, and we're spending out $1,135. This ability versus effort rank, it basically says the county's ability to afford additional spending is ranked 60th out of 100, but the effort is 73. You would like to see those two equal if you were an educator. So we also went and looked at similarly funded districts, same demographics, same size. And we actually found a few districts below us, too. Anson's about $20. There was one other one that was 40. But then we have districts that fund all the way up to $400 per ADM more than we are. All right. So that's my presentation. I know that Sean has one he would like to run through you with where we're at on equipment, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. James.
Thank you.
We'll, I guess, hold some of our questions maybe till Mr. Britt gets finished.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As Dr. James indicated in his presentation, there was a request for an increase of what our capital spending has been in prior years, and part of that is what I'm going to present to you tonight. One of the things Dr. James had asked that I do upon coming into the position as superintendent was put together a three-year technology plan. And having worked on that over the recent months, put together what I call Vision 2020 is what we want our schools to look like from a technology standpoint by the year 2020. Before we get to that, I want to kind of back up and just give you an overview of where we've been in the last nine years. In fact, the last year, I was a classroom teacher in 2009. We had instituted a program. At the time, our three-year plan was a, what was called the 21st Century Classroom Project. And with the help of local boards and funding that we had available, we were able to put in the classrooms, every teacher, a desktop, a laptop, and a projector mounted on the ceiling. And in the time since, in fact, in 2013, as we were well into that program, we expanded to give in student devices to each of our students, starting with high school, then middle, and then down to the elementary level. And that's been quite a big success. But as you can imagine, when you start adding that layer of new equipment, the cost of these programs do tend to go up. And in fact, last year, we replaced out the first high school Chromebook program with a new round of Chromebooks as well. In doing so, it's impacted the technology that we initially purchased in 2009, the classroom technology. The classroom desktops that were purchased at that time still remain. And although our staff has done a great job, I believe, in keeping them updated and keeping them on task, or just from a technology standpoint, if you've ever had an old computer at home, you can well imagine that a 2009 device doesn't quite keep up with the demands of technology today. We did replace the laptops with our teachers. The last round that we got were two years ago for our elementary teachers, but some of our high school teachers still have laptops that were purchased in 2013. So we're going into 2018-19 school year, and those are about five years old as well. And again, the projectors that were purchased in the '09-2010 timeframe still remain as well. And what I've done is gone around to the schools this year in my new role as chief technology officer, just trying to observe some things that are happening in technology from an instructional standpoint. And one of the things that always stood out to me in a lot of our classrooms, if you've been to any recently, these are actual pictures that I took of learning taking place. And if you notice, the projector is on, and you can see just kind of the challenges that teachers have from day to day with viewing off that projector. As much as we try to do replace bulbs, do maintenance, clean filters, the daily maintenance, these devices are, you know, reaching year nine, 10. In fact, some of these Promethean boards that were bought with PTO funding were bought as far back as 2005 and 2006. A couple other pictures. This is another one at one of our local schools. Again, the projector's on. And when the lights are on, you can imagine the challenge it is for students to interact with that touch panel board right there. And here's another one as well. So this is kind of, you see these in a lot of our classrooms, particularly our elementary as well. Now, here's a picture in the lower left-hand corner of a device that one of the local PTOs did buy this year. It's a solution that I've looked at and found to be quite receptive by our teachers. It's a touch interactive panel, a flat panel. So it removes the option of having to replace bulbs. It can become fairly wireless, so you're not having to run a lot of cable in any new addition of this type of equipment. So what I'd like to do is begin to replace out the old projection system with these touch panels. And, you know, given the cost of each of these pieces of equipment, I know it's not anything that's going to be done in one year's time. That's why I put together a three-year plan. And also, give the teachers, right now, a device similar to what the students have in hand, a more mobile, easy-to-access Chrome device that they can take around and work with students to begin to replace out their laptops. And then eventually, get them a, what I call a workstation desktop in the future, in the coming years, so that they will have in the classroom the technology that they need in order to bring our students into 21st century learning skills that are required today. The cost of each, these are estimated costs based on state contract rates, vendors I've worked with. You can see in the first year, particularly with the elementary, on the flat panels, the cost of it, in addition to, we will have to refresh the middle school Chromebooks as well. And I went ahead and added, I know that we're only talking about year one this year, but for, just for information purposes, I've added additional years, which the cost would come down because you would not have to replace as many panels in the middle and high school levels, given that the elementary has a much larger grade span than those two right there. But I wanted to share this with you, and there's year three as well. And that's it. Any questions? I'm sure for Dr. James and I, you can ask as well.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about the computers you're talking about. Do you have an option to lease these rather than purchase? And if there is an option?
Yeah, the leasing is an option, and we've looked at that before. I know last year, we looked at it. You know, getting locked in to any lease also impacts your future ability to purchases. I mean, it is an option to look at as well. I'm not sure on the panels, per se, which is the largest of all the cost, but I do know on the devices, we have talked to vendors that will do leasing options as well.
And the reason I bring that up, technology changes so fast.
Yeah.
And when you buy something, six months later, it may be outdated.
Yeah. Well, with any purchase or lease, you're still probably locked into the individual devices for about three to four years. So either that time, you can re-up another lease. Couple of the vendors we work with through our purchase program provide a very good warranty, which is helpful, particularly if students are taking devices home. As you can imagine, with wear and tear, if you have a good warranty behind it through that purchase option, it really helps out a great deal to offset any additional cost.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
I hear sometimes that the speed of the internet is not high-speed at your schools. I guess the question I want to ask, are our speeds that are at schools considered high-speed, or do we still need more speed to get our students to where they can?
Yeah, part of the plan I'm putting together for the three-year plan is, you know, all of our internet is provided, broadband is provided through MCMC with a partnership with the state, which I'm meeting with on Wednesday. And they monitor our levels, and we have increased our levels somewhat. Now, some of the speed, per se, can be, I think the speed levels are okay, but as we're adding new technologies, and I know MC has indicated to us that they will need to increase that over time, but of course, that's part of the other plan of, with our E-rate funding to expand that program to a potential 10-gig connection, which is becoming more the standard now, particularly within our school districts. So when that would come online within the coming year or two, if we begin the process of bidding that out, that would hopefully help. And again, with our refresh on our access points and our classrooms and those things, my hope is that all this will work together to create a better experience for all our users, speed and the technology they do get in hand.
I guess one last question. If we have schools out there
Yes, sir.
...that are not fast enough
Yeah.
...for the computers, which schools are they?
Right now, I mean, everything from what I would say, all our schools are pretty comparable. I know our newer access points are in our high schools. Our elementary schools have some of our older access points, which could impact speeds. And our E-rate program next year is to replace some of those access points, if not all of them, the elementary, so that will bring it up to par with the high schools. So, you know, I can't really definitively say which schools, because from a day-to-day experience, there's things that can impact speed just besides bandwidth. It can be, there could be some interference, somebody running a microwave somewhere nearby. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into what impacts speed as well. But for the most part, with the team that I work with, they stay on top of any problems that may come up correcting it or working with people to correct when it needs to be.
Thank you. County manager, he's got a comment.
I was just, I know you mentioned broadband, and I know that's been a board priority. And I know I've had conversations with Dr. James, and I think it's likely that he'll come back to us during the fiscal year as they do their E-rate, RFP, and they're going to ask for that 10... for that 10-gig. And my guess is it'll probably be, you know, symmetrical, and that it's not going to be shared bandwidth with, with someone else, the person down the street. I think once they do that, it's conceivable they're going to need some one-time money to help with their electronics on their end. And I think the board, given that it's your goal to get broadband in this community, I think that's a good way of helping to, to do that, is helping the school system get the equipment. Because it's, it's likely that you're going to have other vendors that may want to get into this market, and that's a good thing for competition and consumers' rates for our, for our other consumers. So I think we should give that due consideration when he does bring that forward. But that'll be, I think, later during the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Dr. James, I had one, one question, follow-up on the per-pupil funding. Does that include the teacher supplements? And I believe it's the sales tax from Article 44.
Probably does not, because that report's old. But still, it puts you in comparison with other districts. So we'd probably have to hand calculate that and see where we're at. Of course, the average is 1,500. So if you figure that out, just roughly, that's 3.2 million, which was, would be even ridiculous for us to ask for. But I think our goal should be sort of like our goal with education, is to continuously improve. I think we should look at ways to continuously fund our students here. If the general public is not aware of this, but the state budget used to be 58% towards education, now it's 38%. So what's happening with education funding is the feds are divesting themselves of what they used to provide, and the states are deciding to push it on down to counties. And unfortunately, that places it on the back of taxpayers. And it's, it's just not a good system on the way of funding education in our country. But there is another alternative out there. And of course, it's the quarter cent sales tax. If you look at it, if we would implement the quarter cent sales tax in this county, and what troubles me some is that when you look at the surrounding counties, Richmond and Union are the only two counties that do not have the quarter cent sales tax. So I'm sure that we have individuals who go outside the county and spend their money, and they're paying that school system the quarter cent sales tax. I think it would behoove us as individuals here to keep that quarter cent in our own community and fund our education. That would produce about a million and a half dollars a year through the quarter cent sales tax, which would help us not have to come to you each year and ask you for additional funding, because it would be offset by the quarter cent sales tax paid here in our own county and used by our own citizens. In addition to that, when individuals come into our county, they're helping us pay that quarter cent sales tax. So it's a much better system than trying to fund education off the back of property owners, especially those that have fixed incomes.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. I just wanted to make sure that we were getting accurate information on that. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, item two, planning and zoning, presenter Michael Sandy, planning director. Good evening, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. One second, I'll pull this up. All right, first item today is a public hearing request for rezoning ZA 18-02 Wesley Kent Bowers. It's requested rezoning of 5.69 acres, located beside and behind 12530 Cottonville Road, Norwood, from M2 Heavy Industrial to RA Residential and Agricultural. Tax record is 37900. Mr. Bowers requests his property located be rezoned to RA. Property is currently zoned into Heavy Industrial. The lots surrounding his property are RA, R20, and M2. Adjacent properties are either used for residential or agricultural or educational purposes. South Towne Middle School is adjacent to the property on the southern property line. This parcel and two others were zoned M2, the request EDC Mr. Bowers's grandfather in 2006. The adjacent M2 properties border two rail lines would remain zoned M2 Heavy Industrial. Although the mission plan is nearby, the Bowers property has not been developed for industry and remains agricultural use today. The 5.69 acres parcel has been divided from the larger tract in frontage on Cottonville Road. Mr. Bowers plans to construct his home on the property and therefore wishes to rezonate for residential use. This property is mostly an open field, as you can see in your packet. One corner of the property cross is crossed by a high tension line, and with one transmission tower on the property. Property has been in the Bowers family since the middle 1960s. Traffic on Cottonville Road in this area averages 1,300 vehicles per day, according to DOT. The property is located in a growth area per 2010 Stanley County Land Use Plan. Planning staff has recommended approval of this request, since the property is located adjacent to other family members' property and has seen no development activity. The planning board reviewed this case on April 9th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request as county commissioners. Some concerns were expressed about creating a landlocked situation for the M2 properties, but the planning board concluded that the properties were already owned, excuse me, by two different individuals, so it was already landlocked. Family members pointed out that the traditional access to M2 properties is through a dirt road, which now crosses a triangle section otherwise unused property owned by the Stanley County Schools. Any future development that remaining, or, excuse me, M2 site would likely benefit acquisition of this area if we ingress and egress. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Commissioner Efer.
Michael, that only access, once that property is off of South Towne Middle School?
That's not, say, say again.
The access that you have off that property-
Right.
-right now is, is Cottonville Road. But if you do away with that section, then you have no access to that back property, like you said, being landlocked.
Yeah, it's already been divided several years ago. Mr. Bowers, Mr. Bowers's grandson bought it. It's been his name for several years now.
Andy, can you clarify on-
Yeah, the access to that property now, actually, to get to that back side, the M2, is actually a dirt road that's actually on the Stanley County Schools property. That's where you access that. We actually had a flight visit here not too long ago. That's how we access the property, is through that dirt road. So, yeah. There's a triangle, there's a little triangle that sort of sits down there, and that's where, that's, that's actually your current ingress and egress. So it's, it's just a, it's just a dirt road that someone's using at this point to get across. I don't know if the school system actually has an easement with the Bowers or not, but they're using it to get back to their field. You can see their field off to the right of that property. And then you go through that tree line, and then it opens up into another large piece of property that they farm. And so I don't know if the school system has an deed of easement, or whether it's just sort of a gentleman's agreement to let them go across it. But certainly, if you rezone this property, you know, it makes sense to get a permanent easement from the school system, or work with them to deed that, that triangle off the county, so we could have access to that part of that property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got to hold a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against the rezoning ZA 18-02 Wesley K. Bowers? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? See none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the change of this rezoning of 5.69 acres to residential agriculture. My second motion.
Got a motion to grant the rezoning request, and a second from, got a motion from Commissioner Lohhan, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any discussion? Commissioner Lohhan, in your motion, I'm sure you'll be glad to add, this project will allow residential use to remain the primary use long Cottonville Road and provide a buffer for South Towne Middle School.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify with a saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, Michael, item was C, item B now, ZA 1804, consideration of text amendments to county zoning. Senator Michael Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Text amendment arisen. You have a revised copy at your desk. It's red on there. The text amendment arose from the request that's actually, the next item on your agenda, is the planning board has asked staff to do a text amendment to increase the buffer areas on solar farms or solar, electric power generation systems. And that would increase the buffer area currently at 25 feet to 50 feet. And so those would be a variable width between 25 and 50, based on the recommendation of the zoning administrator, because every situation with topography and distances and existing vegetation plays a factor in site plans. And of course, these, these are not flat terrains all the time, they're not easily accessible, and they're all different. So they instructed staff to present that text amendment and made that recommendation at their last meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions or read the text amendment.
Commissioners, any questions for Michael?
Mr. Chairman, I had, I guess, for lack of a better term, noticed a discrepancy between what the text amendment actually says and what the minutes of the zoning board actually reflect. Our text amendment says, should be increased to a band between 25 and 50 feet, as determined by the zoning administrator. And the minutes of that meeting actually refer to a motion made by Mr. Loughlin, adding the language that would require an increase to the width, the buffer required on areas adjoining residential to 50 feet, and doubling the amount of vegetation required. So there, there's that discrepancy there that I would like to take care of.
Can I recognize Bobby, give a little further explanation?
Thank you. Commissioner Swain, that's a good question. The, the planning board had quite a discussion about how to address this, and, and gave a fair amount of leeway. It may not be well reflected in the minutes at this point. Of course, remember, those are draft minutes, so the planning board hasn't reviewed them as well and, and made a final approval of them. What we did do, as a staff, we went back, drafted the amendment as you see it today, with the 25 to 50-foot language, which I think is that next slide. But, and then emailed that back out to the planning board to see if they had any suggestions or comments back. Only heard back from two of them, one of them being Mr. Loughlin, the, the maker of the motion, and the other, Dr. John Ekman. And both said, sounds good to us. Other board members did not respond, so I don't have that information. But I guess the only comment I have is they did kind of, while it said 50 feet, and there was a lot of discussion about that, that their goal was to certainly increase at least double that amount of vegetation, and, and create a, a more of a significant buffer to it. So it, and I guess in a way, and Ms. Fur might address it, but I, you know, it's, it's the board's discretion how they want to amend the ordinance, as long as we don't increase the amount more, what was advertised in the paper, and I have that right in front of me, it's here somewhere, but, but gives you that, you know, up, kind of an up to, because it didn't actually specify an amount in the newspaper, it simply said to increase the buffer.
My understanding is, is the text amendment, proposed text amendment put forth, put forth, would give the zoning administrator the ability to have some variances between 25 and 50 feet?
Partly, as Mr. Sandy indicated, based on topography and that sort of thing, just in case, because we don't know what the future, what, what those future situations will be.
Sure. Any other questions from Commissioners? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan.
I guess two questions. One is, as far as the height of these buffers, what, is there a required height? Like, when you plant these vegetations, they stuck, are they mature? Or are they, how is that, that done?
Yeah, I'd have to pull, read the ordinance, but it, there is this-
I think they're having a two-and-a-half-inch caliper at planting.
At six inches above, you know, I think that's right. There, there is some language to that effect in the, in the buffer requirement.
They're definitely not mature. They're probably going to be in this, in this height range, four to six-foot range. So they'll be, you know, growing, typically growing in the nurseries you'll see, and come out planting by landscape folks. But there, there's technical measurements that we go by, based on the caliper size.
Any other questions, Board? All right, we've got to hold a public hearing for this. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this text amendment request? Any other comments, questions from the board? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? See none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve ZA 18-04 text amendment to the planning zoning.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre to approve the text amendment request. I have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Got Commissioner Efer with a second. Any further discussion?
I, I do have one more question for Mr. Sandy. He keeps running off. Just, if you got 50, 25 to 50-foot vegetation, some vegetation you can, you can see through, and some you can't, would they be a possibility that you would, if you can see through that vegetation, that you would go back and add them to, to add some additional planning on that?
Yes, we would. And that's why when a little bit of leeway works wonders for sites, site plans, is that we would look, say if you had pines, longleaf pines, you know, that gives you one type of screening. If you got, you know, intermittent vegetation, we can go in and be sure that supplement it with vegetation that's required in the ordinance with what's on the ground, would make, would make the intent of the ordinance upheld. We, you know, we'd be sure that the intent of the ordinance, you know, gives the buffer that's required for that section of the woods, because it varies from open field to, you know, to heavily vegetation with evergreen or either deciduous trees.
But that would be your call as zoning administrator, right? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
I don't, I, I'm not going to support this tonight. I, you know, I thought I could when I, when I came in here, but I, I cannot. I would like to see the finalized minutes from the zoning board and, and get the exact reflection of what they want for this to, this to be. I'm going to vote no tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. Any other comments, Board members? All right, everybody in favor, please signify with a saying aye. Any opposed? Got five to two, Commissioner Morgan, Lohhan, Vice Chairman McIntyre, myself, Commissioner Efer voting in the affirmative, Commissioner Swain, and Commissioner Lauder voting.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure. Motion carries, five to two.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
It's my understanding of our rules of procedure that a motion to amend an ordinance requires a unanimous vote on the first reading, which would bring it back to our next meeting and give us time to review that after the minutes are provided.
I'll have to defer to Council Fur. I'll have to defer to Council Fur.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure thing.
Mr. Chairman, could we take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely. Take a five-minute recess. We're back in session. Appreciate you all bearing with us while we make a little sausage here. I guess our next item is item C, ZA 18-03, Stanley Solar LLC requests the establishment of a solar electric generating system overlay district.
Mr. Chairman, can you clarify publicly what happened with the last motion?
Let me do that. Our rules of procedure contradict a little bit of, I guess, what we were attempting to do. So since they don't match up, we are going to bring up the text amendment at our next meeting to further consider that. And possibly, at some point, look at our rules of procedure to possibly amend those as well for these types of situations. Did I get that right, Counselor? Okay. Mr. Sandy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you know it, ZA 18-03, Stanley Solar LLC requests the establishment of a solar electric power generation system overlay district, which we know as SCPGS, to portions of six tracts located at or near 20165 Old Aquadel Road. Tax records 6872-19965, 4200, 7259, 6873, 6435. Total acres of the six tracts is 391.89 acres. Requested rezoning to portion owned by Ned's, David Ned Stallins, Donna Stallins, Ronald Carter, Claudine Carter, Lilian Poplin, Roger Poplin, located in behind 20165 Old Aquadel Road. They have the SCPGS overlay district applied to the current RA Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The area will be slightly smaller due to floodplain and topography. You can see a map that's in your packet. The home area at 20165 Old Aquadel Road will also be remaining outside the overlay district along with some adjacent acreage. Only the section outlined on the map will be included in the SCPGS overlay district. Currently, the property is owned RA Residential Agricultural. Normal uses in the district include single-family dwellings on large lots, farm-type enterprises including greenhouse, poultry houses, hatcheries, agriculture processing facilities as part of bona fide farms. The proposed solar generation system will generate 111 million 91,373 kilowatt-hours and will connect to the existing Duke Energy Transmission Line that runs through the property currently. Lease agreements with Stanley Solar LLC have been reached between the property owners and parent company, Solterra Partners. You should have a copy of the lease agreement on your desk. Some wooded areas have been preserved and plans to have been submitted to the county indicating the required fencing and buffer areas that will be provided. Plans also have been submitted and approved for the decommissioning and deconstruction of the solar array once the useful life of the system has been exhausted. Data on inverter noise have been received and approved. Noise will be minimum occurrence during the daylight hours only. The contract which Solterra has with Duke Energy is for a duration of 20 years. It may be renegotiated at any time, or at that time. According to Stanley Solar, the proposed system will generate enough power supply over 12,000 homes for a year. There would be approximately 175,750 solar panels with estimated value of $70 million. Traffic on Old Aquadel Road in this area averages 570 cars per day, according to DOT. Traffic will increase during a period of construction, but increase will be minimal during regular operation. This property is not located in the growth area per the 2010 land use plan. Planning staff recommends approval of this area since the property is located in a rural area will have minimal visual and environmental impacts. It also does not, it also does not negatively affect the value of joint agricultural lands. Sandy County Planning Board reviewed this project at their meeting on April 9th. They questioned Mr. Richter, who is here tonight, concerning the development and processes involved. Two adjoining residents, Mr. Gann and Mr. McLendon, expressed concern about the changes to the normal view of their respective yards. The planning board discussed this and recommended an amendment to the SCPGS section of the overlay of the zoning ordinance, which increased the buffer, which you heard earlier tonight. Plan Board and Plan Department recommend the amendment as written in ZA 18-04. Plan Board recommended approval of the requested SCPGS overlay district by a vote of four to two. The dissenting votes were expressed concern about the limited amount of buffer required. The Board subsequently recommended approval of the amendment requiring additional vegetation buffer near adjoining properties with existing residential dwellings. Due to positive economic impact and no significant effect on the value of neighboring properties, planning staff recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure how germane to anything it is, but what is this land being used for right now?
It's currently agricultural, mostly row crops.
Mostly open farmland, woods.
Yeah, there's a mixture of all those. Mostly if you look at the air photography, see the parcels.
Yeah. You'd have to go back and forth to.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Bob. And you have copies of this, but the kind of, what color that would be purple sort of outline, that's the area that's actually going to be assigned as the overlay district. And you kind, it's superimposed, if you look carefully, you can kind of get the idea of what's currently veget, in trees, mostly evergreens, pines. And you can see that clear on our map, but hard to get the outlines here. But you can see some are planted or were planted and others are in fields. And I don't know, Mr. Richter or the landowners might be able to give you more, better answers to what's currently there.
Thank you. What is the terrain of the land? Is it mostly flat?
It's mostly flat with some slight hills.
And the buffer that's going to go up, what would that consist of? What type?
It's spelled out in the ordinance, it's a mixture of evergreen, the deciduous trees, based on, they have some options that they can pick, but we also take into consideration existing vegetation on the property.
Right. And neighbors would not be able to step out the front door and see the actual solar panel?
We'd try to minimize that by the buffer.
Or the back door.
Or the back door.
Whatever it might be. Side door.
We do have a map that shows maybe a buffer area around to the nearest structures, if you'd like to see that. It's this one here, and those are in 100-foot increments. Now, that's just measured from the property line, not necessarily to a solar panel, because there is a 50-foot setback from the panel to the property line. That is, if it's at its closest point.
50-foot setback for panels.
From the panel and the property line.
Oh.
But these lines are measured to the property line.
Does that 50-foot buffer goes from the panel to the property line?
Yep, it can. Right, it currently is 25, and the text amendment referred to going to 50.
50 foot is right about you just.
Any other questions?
I do have one. Mr. Sandy, what is the closest from the setback lines? What is the closest structure to this property?
I'm not sure exactly that exact measurement, but by this map, it's from the property line to the structure looks like almost 100 feet. If you look at the bottom of the map, I see the green line with a red dot. I don't know if you can see my mouse moving or not. I'm thinking this right here would be the closest one.
Are those structures that they plot?
We just had them plotted as structures and not necessarily houses. We'll have to look at air photography and see which ones, if we can tell from that. Mr. Richter might be able to give more detailed information.
Would he be able to give that?
Okay. So when he comes up, he can probably give you more detail about the closest type of
Any other questions for Mr. Sandy before we hold a public hearing? See none. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this project, please come forward. If you will, please tell us who you are and figure with.
Sure. My name is Dennis Richter with Solterra Partners out of Charlotte. We are the developer of the solar farm, Stanley Solar, and we do solar farm development in North and South Carolina. I do have a presentation that I think will help with some of your questions, if you'll allow me to run through it. Okay. So as I mentioned, here with Solterra Partners, and we're looking to do a solar farm over on Old Aquadel Road. And so what I like to do is I like to run through a quick presentation to kind of give everybody some images, so that everybody understands, you know, what a solar farm is and how it relates to the adjacent properties and the types of things that we do in the development process. So just to, you know, reorient everybody, this shows the location of the solar farm in proximity to Albemarle, over on Old Aquadel. This is a photograph on Old Aquadel Road, looking to the north. So this is the only, and you'll see later on a later image, but this is the only point where the actual land the farm is on comes to the street, comes to actually Old Aquadel Road. It's a very narrow section. So here, you would probably, a good way to understand that would be, the number one is about where that picture was taken, looking to the north. And the yellow line represents the proximate outline of the solar farm, actually where the boundaries would likely be. So I'd like to go through some images of how a solar farm is built, and then I'll have some more information at the end of this. But it's a pretty straightforward process. It's kind of like an assembly process. We'll come in, we'll prepare the land. We try to use the natural topography as much as we can. We have certain tolerances we have to stay within, but generally speaking, we'll work with what's there. So you come in and these steel piles are driven into the ground. There's several thousands of those for this particular solar farm. And then after that, they come in with steel purlins and build on top of those steel piles, prepare the purlins for the solar panels. And then this is, you know, this running the wires, there's miles, hundreds of miles of wire that will connect these panels, and they're running the wire in this particular picture. And then the solar panels come in and are actually mounted to the racks that are put on top of the steel piles. The energy that is collected from the panels gets, goes to a thing called an inverter. And this is an inverter. There'll be several of these around the property, typically on the, well, they're on the inner part of the property, they're not on the perimeter. These were used to convert it from DC to AC, and then it will be, go through a transformer where it will transform the voltage up to the transmission line voltage, so it can be put into the transmission line. These units make very little noise. I think Mr. Sandy mentioned, you know, at the perimeter of the solar farm, the decibels are like 40 decibels, which is typical for, typical home, which you would hear, noise you hear around your home. They have a little slight hum to them on a really sunny day, but you don't really hear that at the edge of the property, at the property line edge, because these machines are internal to the system. Just another picture of a completed solar farm with the inverters, transformers. This is an example, a picture of, and you'll see a later image of this, the fence, the actual racking. This is from the, looking from the north to the south. You can see that distance in there is approximately 30 feet. And then just some examples of some completed solar farms. So this is one of our farms in Wayne County. This is a smaller farm. This is five megawatts. This is another one in Keninsville. This one is not one that we've built, but it's an example of a farm that it will be similar to what you'll see here in Stanley County. I mentioned that the panels and the racking will follow the contours as much as possible. This particular one does follow the contours. This particular solar farm is actually the Apple Solar Farm on Highway 321. If any of you have been on Highway 321, just outside of Charlotte, this is the solar farm they use to power their data center. This is the same solar farm, really, from outside the property, looking in from some of the adjacent trees, adjacent properties. This particular solar farm is actually located in North Carolina, and recently completed. And just an image of, this one is flatter than what we have here in Stanley County, but again, the panels are following the contours. Another solar farm, you know, following the rolling hills. This is up in Mount Erie. This gives you an example of, you know, once the farm is complete, grass will be planted between the panels. There will be gravel roads to go to those inverter machines you saw, so that you can maintain them. But this will be maintained during the growing season. You'll probably mow it three to four times a year, depending on the growth. Another example of the panels after they're installed, the same project from another Again, another example of the vegetation around the panels. And, you know, you can kind of see in the middle there where it's, you know, where there's a draw, you know, we still have to follow the natural drainage of the property. You know, the panels will go around those draws, and if there's a stream, they'll have to set back from the stream a certain distance. This is the zoning plan that we've submitted, and it shows to, it kind of shows the buffering that is currently proposed. The dark green represents where we anticipate using existing screening, because of the vegetation that will be, will be inside the property lines of the property that we'll be developing. So the line that you see, where the green is, that is not the property line. The property line actually is the dark black line, dotted black line. So where we have room and where we have a lot of existing vegetation, we plan to use that. You get down to the bottom of the page, there is a lighter green color, and that color is where we anticipate using the buffer that we've talked about. That particular buffer, we'll see in a couple later slides. This one is currently showing, I believe, at about 10 feet, which is the current buffer width, and with the recommendation to go from a 25 to 50 buffer. This particular buffer, because it is a round residential, would be increased to the 25 to 50-foot with a double layer of vegetation. This is an example. I want to give you an example of what that looks like. So this is a solar farm, an existing solar farm. So trying to show the distance the panels are from the fence, so that's the 30 feet. And then this 20 feet represents a buffer on an existing project. So here, we've got, the light blue line is the property line. There is a buffer of double vegetation that you can see. It's, this is only one year old, so it's not fully grown yet. And then I just give you an example, in this particular example, and this is a project near Monroe, the closest structure to the farm is 120 feet to the property line. And so you'd add to that the 50 feet. So that would be the 50-foot setback, which would include, inside that setback would include the 20-foot, 25-foot buffer, and then it would have the 30 feet, which would be the way to get circulation around the panels if we have to get around them to do any kind of maintenance or cleaning. This is an example of an evergreen buffer. This is a double buffer. So it's actually the same buffer that's in the ordinance. I think it's 11 plants per 100, no. 11 plants per 1,000 feet? No, no. 100 feet. Yeah. So they're basically 10 feet apart. Wish it 1,000, it'd be great, but it's, no, it's 100 feet. This particular, these plants are actually right at about nine feet or so apart, and they're double-layered, so they're staggered. So I'd like to talk about the distance of the residential. We did have two landowners come to the meeting last time and express a concern about what they're going to see from their properties. You know, would it be obtrusive? Would it affect the property values? So I wanted to go ahead and put together a couple exhibits to give you an idea of what that is. So this is the back corner of the project on the plan that you saw earlier. These are the distances to the residential, these are the closest residential structures at the back of the property. So the area inside to the left of the red, that would be where the solar panels would be located. So the one at the bottom, Mr. Gann, I went to his property on Thursday, they drove me around and showed me their concerns. They're going to be, their home is going to be about 1,200 feet from where we anticipate the panel, the racking, to be located. So, you know, his home sits kind of in the woods. You can see that there's some vegetation, there's some trees there. You know, we talked about topography. So this gives you an idea of the difference in topography. The solar farm is going to be at about 457 feet, as you can see that little block there on the bottom corner. And then his home is at approximately 529 feet. So between his home and the solar facility, there's, you know, some natural vegetation around his home. around his home, there's some large trees. And then it goes down into a stream, and then it goes back up the hill to where the red line is for the solar panels. So there really isn't any view that, there's any view from the home. You cannot see anything. You cannot see the solar system. If you go down to the, if we drove down to the, almost the property's edge, down at the bottom, you can see a track next to the cleared area on his property. I'll show you some images that will give you an idea of what you would see from that location. This is on the southern edge of the property. Mr. McGlynn had a concern about how close or what he would see out of his backyard. So the red dot is his home, red, I'm sorry, the red diamond. And so he is one of the closest homes to it. His home would be 300 feet from the edge of the, rather, fence in this case. He anticipated that before that fence, there would be that 25-foot buffer before the fence of double vegetation. So his home is about level with where that fence is from a topography standpoint. It might be a little higher where the panels are going to go. So that screen should be more than cover anything that he might see. When that screen grows in, he should not be able to see anything. He'll see a green, he'll see an evergreen screen. The same would go for the property on the bottom. It's about 190 feet from the fence, where the fence would be. You know, there's existing vegetation that's on his property, I'm pretty sure, so we would have to put that same vegetation screen on our property, you know, in the 25-foot buffer before you get to the fence. So basically, from the property line to the fence, there would be a 25-foot buffer and double planted evergreens, same situation. So I'd like to give you a few fun facts. I think some of them, Mr. Sandy mentioned, of kind of what the solar farm will produce. I mentioned that it'll produce 111 million kilowatt-hours of energy produced with approximately 175,000 solar panels, which will power 12,391 homes for one year. So what that eliminates is also equivalent to eliminating 9,300,000 gallons of gasoline use. So while solar doesn't offset gasoline use directly, it gives you an idea of the amount of carbon-producing energy it can produce, it can replace. And so that is equivalent to driving 202 million miles. So the acres of trees, so this solar farm will produce clean energy. If it weren't, if we produced the same energy from a fossil fuel plant, it would take 97,000 trees to clean the air that that power plant produces. So it's just an example, trying to give an example of the clean energy and how it helps the, how it helps the environment. You know, that's equivalent to 82,000 metric tons of carbon annually that is not emitted into the atmosphere. So just a few benefits for the local community. You know, the solar farm doesn't use the schools. It doesn't use any of the services, although, yes, it does maybe use fire. Fire would have to be involved in the construction of the project. So during the construction process, which will be approximately eight months, eight to nine months, you know, you'll have increased revenues to the businesses during the construction period, hotels, food, material vendors, et cetera. Many of the skilled labor, the companies will bring a good bit of the labor in, but they will also hire local labor during the construction process. So, and as an example, the current property tax is being paid on the property that's going to have the overlay district on it, amounts to $1,847. Once the farm is in place and in operation, it would generate $121,860 in annual property tax revenue. And so, this is a solar farm at Disney World, a little fun little picture. And so, yes, I'm, of course, available for questions.
Any questions from the board?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman. Duke Energy, my understanding you have contracts in hand.
We do not have contracts in hand. Duke Energy has changed their process to an RFP. That RFP is being released here in August. We will enter this project into the RFP with several other projects around the state and compete with them for the power purchase agreement, which is 20 years, and it will be based on location, it'll be based on price. And Duke Energy and its consultant will make those decisions.
If you do not receive the contract, still going to build the facility?
No. It's, you know, it's akin to a real estate retail center. You know, if you're not able to get a tenant for the building, you may be, it may be a retail center planned, it doesn't get built. It's the same thing here.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Richter.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this project, please come forward. Welcome. Please state your name for the board and where you live.
Edward Gann. I live on Mayberry Road. I'm one of the property owners adjoining the solar site on the northeast corner. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to visit with you this evening. I'm Edward Gann, an adjoining property owner to the proposed solar electric power overlay district. My rear property line overlaps and is common with the solar district for approximately 1,200 feet along the project's upper eastern perimeter. My spouse Sandra and I purchased over 44 acres back in 1990. We built a home on our property in 1991. We've raised two daughters in this rural, quiet agricultural and ecologically, environmentally-friendly area of Stanley County. Our family, friends, others from our community have benefited from the rural property experiences that we have, and now we have a grandson, and he's just beginning to explore and enjoy the outdoors at our farm location. The word surprised does not begin to describe our level of concern when we learned of the planned solar electric power overlay district that was proposed. As you're aware, this district encompasses nearly 400 agricultural and forestry acres, which will be converted into a approximate 30-plus megawatt solar power installation. The generating capacity at this location would likely be at least eight times larger than two other locations that have already been zoned and permitted and are in some portion of progress toward coming to reality here in Stanley County. Sandra and I have always understood Stanley County and its citizens place a real high value on farmland and resources and works toward preservation, as is reflected in the county logo right behind you there today. It would appear that a reasonable, fair-minded citizen landowner would have a concern in regard to any nearby proposed solar project, even more so for a single project involving nearly 400 acres. And these are acres that we have watched be in soybeans and cotton and been just over the ridge from the 12 acres that I produce equine quality hay forage. I would like to address a few matters pertaining to this change request that maybe can provide some additional insight and information and perspective for you as a board. The Stanley Planning Board considered this zoning request on April 19, April 9, 2018, and as you're aware, it was not unanimously recommended by a therefore to vote to be considered by your body, the Commissioners. Additionally, one Planning Board member withdrew from participation in the Planning Board proceedings due to the topic, due to, that he was a landowner of acreage included in the solar district. Additionally, it is my understanding and the understanding of others who adjoin the property that the solar district landowners, that they do not reside as a perma or primary residence on their respective tracks. I mean, they are absent or reside somewhere else. Additionally, the Stanley zoning ordinance, Section 618, that speaks to solar power generation system overlay, when you read it, it's highly inadequate in regard to an installation such as a 30-megawatt grid system encompassing the nearly 400 acres as proposed. Section 618 consumes two and one-quarter pages of the 177, some pages of the Stanley zoning ordinance package that you can read on the website. A reasonable person can identify, when they take a quick read of Section 618, that it is primarily written "to address safe and respectful operation of solar power systems located in residential neighborhoods and developments mounted as rooftop or yard structure equipment involving small megawatt output and a small footprint of area that is used." Many of the included elements and descriptors that you find in Section 618 have limited applicability to a 400-acre site. Just as a matter of comparison about our Stanley zoning, zoning ordinance Section 614 for telecommunication towers utilizes seven pages of text, and Section 408 for signs encompasses 18 pages of text. Ladies and gentlemen, I think that may be something to keep in mind. Current federal and state solar power mandates, purchase, and their tax incentives provide significant financial support toward the economic feasibility of solar power generation and technology and the machinery at the present time. These incentives and property tax breaks may not be present in the future. They're at the discretion of legislative bodies beyond Stanley County. There is no guarantee of their continuance. North Carolina does rank as the nation's second-largest state for installed solar capacity, with significant influence coming from these initiatives and these requirements. Duke Energy stated in a February 2017 article that was published in the Charlotte Observer, these are their words, "Generous state rules have left the state," meaning North Carolina, "awash in solar farms with little utility input on whether they are needed, where they're built, and how large they are." Duke Energy has also stated in that press release that they expect to overpay solar developer companies $1 billion too much for electrical energy generated over the next 12 years, which is the balance of most existing 15-year contracts. And that comes from the federal law, requires that utilities like Duke, they have to purchase this renewable energy power generated by qualified solar projects. The North Carolina Utilities Commission does get involved with the payment levels and rates for purchase renewable energy from the solar generation operators. And in 2008, North Carolina enacted a renewable solar energy portfolio, requiring NC utility companies to source 12.5% of their power generation from renewable sources by the year 2021. A reasonable person would perceive and understand that these overpayments to purchase solar electric power is mandated. The electrical line materials and labor and expense to safely connect these solar farms to the utility system and other costs related from renewable energy purchases are currently and will likely continue to be passed along to the electrical energy consumer. Some questions maybe we should consider. What will be the effect on a solar power LLC operator as solar energy incentives and power purchase mandates end or modified or just dry up? Will utility companies receive solar purchase rate modifications by continuing to lobby the NC Utilities Commission? What will be the result of this competitive bidding process and 20-year contracts terms for the purchase of solar power by Duke Energy, and especially on this 400-acre site? Will solar power limited liability corporation operators revise their rental and land leasing payments to solar farm landowners as a result of these changing solar power initiatives? Solar electric power generating equipment continues to improve performance efficiency and wattage output per panel at a rapid pace, like all electronics. At what point might this proposed 30-megawatt installation become no longer financially feasible to continue operation with the technology of the day it was built? Will a solar LLC operator walk away, sell, take some other action? A reasonable person should consider the possibility that there may come a point when it is financially feasible for Stanley Solar LLC to walk away from the project, to break the contract rather than to fulfill it. Where does that leave Stanley County and its citizens at that point? Possibly with a marred and tainted landscape to clean up at its own expense. When this proposed solar installation has completed its useful operation and performance life, we've already addressed lightly tonight, discussed the word decommissioning, how can the citizens of Stanley County, and especially solar site adjoining landowners, have a legal and binding assurance that the solar power generation equipment will be decommissioned and removed according to applicable codes, safety procedures, and environmental protection regulations? Ladies and gentlemen, essentially, North Carolina has not yet dealt with the solar farm decommissioning process, and there are significant unknowns. Some additional questions to consider. Is a properly documented and executed job performance bond needed to secure a correct and timely solar farm decommissioning operation? Will the solar site property owners and their heirs be able to meet the requirements to return the involved acreage back to agricultural production? Will a decommissioned solar site possibly be able to meet organic farming certification requirements, or will that be off limits forever? And lastly, throughout all these elements I've provided you, how will adjoining landowners' property values be affected? Yes, I think we all understand that's a relative concern, but as I shared with the Planning Board, whether it is a real value or whether it is a perceived value in someone interested in making a purchase, you know, as the time comes, it's still a real value in the eyes of the seller. North Carolina State University professor and industrial extension educator, Dr. Herbert Eckerman. He's a noted proponent of renewable energy, solar, and efficiency improvement in industrial facilities. He's the founder of the NC Solar Center at NC State University, and he has provided some insights to the North Carolina Energy Policy Council meeting and to the Raleigh News and Observer in 2014 and 15, respectively. I want to share with you some excerpts from Professor Eckerman. Due to solar power, the cost of electricity is going to increase for industry and residential customers. We're creating billionaires, the investors who benefit from tax breaks offered by state and federal government. A solar developer has very little skin in the game. It's awfully important for the people, industry, and taxpayers of North Carolina to understand that. How we pay for solar energy capacity is important. Eckerman continues, "Solar power requires specific conditions, which are full exposure to the sun for the panel to collect energy. The energy will be interrupted on cloudy days, rainy weather, and with the daily 24-hour sunlight darkness cycle. I really wouldn't want my home to be relying only on solar power. After suppertime, it'd be dark. Because solar power is not reliable, it does require backup generation systems, and that burden falls on the utilities." Eckerman states additionally, "New legislation is needed to shift the cost of solar projects from taxpayers to solar developers." He asks, "Should we really be subsidizing an energy industry that is intermittent and performs at the whim of Mother Nature?" Other cities, towns, and rural areas have taken action in regard to restriction, limits, or directives on solar farm location. I'll share a few with you. The city of Hamlet, North Carolina, in Richmond County, in July 2014, established restrictions on solar farms within their city limits and the adjacent rural land to the city. Selma, North Carolina, Johnston County, August 2015, town council voted to prohibit any additional solar farms from locating in an R-20 zoning district, which I believe is their RA equivalent here in Stanley, including extraterritorial jurisdictions. Solar is allowed in industrial zoning, and this request was made to the town council by the Selma Planning Board. City of Shelby, North Carolina, I bet some of you are familiar with this. In February 2015, the city council amended their unified development ordinance. Solar farms 10 acres or larger would no longer be allowed to apply for special use permits in rural and residential districts. And that was printed in the Shelby Star. These news reports and from other localities sound a common theme, solar electric power generation. Solar electric power generation in, near, or around where people live their lives commands carefully researched and well-planned zoning directives, as well as clear, well-defined restrictions where and how solar generation will not be allowed. I'm sure you're aware of some other items that come to light. The local property tax break for solar operators of 80% discount on their tax rate for personal property of machinery and equipment? That seems a bit unfair to other Stanley County commercial citizens who have commercial properties and operate businesses, who provide jobs to our residences, and who buy our goods and services. Solar farms do not provide permanent jobs in our region or contribute to an economy that enables our children and grandchildren to remain in Stanley County when they become adults. Solar farms promise to saddle our children with a liability for solar site cleanup in the future. The buck is passed on to them. Who will receive significant profit from solar power in Stanley County? It clearly will be solar power generation operators and their investor groups. Not landowners, not neighbors, not Stanley County, and not Duke Energy. Ladies and gentlemen, I offer these recommendations and requests that you consider them. Number one, deny ZA 1803 zoning change request from Stanley Solar at today's meeting. Number two, immediately take action to start a process that's in compliance with local government-approved methods that will assemble a citizens, elected official, and county government department group to carefully identify and examine zoning directives that are appropriate for likely solar electric power generation sites in regard to their size, planned acreage, county region, and the community where they would exist, nearby transportation, nearby established residential watersheds, existing agricultural voluntary districts, and other related components. Third, establish a six-month minimum time period where no solar power rezoning requests will be considered in order to allow a non-competition time to complete number two that we just mentioned. Number four, provide Stanley citizens with workshop opportunities, meetings, to learn the facts and not folklore about solar generation. And number five, proceed to compile the most inclusive zoning directives, components, requirements, and restrictions related to solar power that will place Stanley County and its citizens in good stead, and establish these key parts of zoning Section 618 for solar power system overlay district as soon as possible. I ask that you seriously consider these concerns that I have printed. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gann. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Gann? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here? I think I saw another hand back here in the back. If you would, please come forward. If you would, please state your name and your address for us.
Yeah, my name's Stephen Eifert, and I live on O'Acquidale Road. I live sort of at the bottom, across the road from the bottom of the proposed solar farm.
Okay.
Okay. I have no facts like what we just heard, but to me, it sounds like typical big business. That's the way they operate. The tearing down the farm seems like what we've seen with Whisk asset mills and all the businesses was built here, factories and stuff, they had to be tore down. But regardless of that, I have lived on this property for 64, we're going on 64 years. I've crossed the road, I have no issue with getting out my door, looking across, and seeing a solar panel. We rode down to South Rocket River Road in Monroe, looked at that big solar farm there, it's across the golf course, and there are some huge houses adjoining it, sitting there, looks fine. You're going on 75, go up Newtown Road, go behind there, there's a railroad track, solar panels that runs all the way down, and there's homes sitting right behind it, in pine trees, they're right on it. And as far as I know, I don't see no buffers. I have been down to Derby Road in Rockingham, there's a 300-acre farm there. When you pull up on it, you'll think you are looking at a lake. You know, it's not that bad to the eyes. So, me and my wife, we've talked about it, that someday this land that is in question is going to be sold. It's just going to. When the farmers quit farming, because I've done no one that's quit, and the guy took it over, he's my age, and I don't know how much longer he's going to do it, but when will that land be sold? Well, when it is, what will come in there, we have no control over it. So, we're thinking that if we have a solar farm there for the next 20, up to 40 years, we're not going to have whatever come in on us. So, that's the way me and my wife thinks, and we're okay with it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Eifert. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak for or against? Andrew, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you guys? I'm Andrew McSwain, a third-generation farmer on the St. Martin Road. Our land is just across Long Creek from the proposed project, and like Steve, I want to be counted as being in favor of progress. There's always, you know, clean energy seems to be consistent with our water-air-land-equate success slogan. Renewable energy, not only environmentally, and from what I saw on the presentation, a good return tax-wise for the county, a good investment. Most of the land that I can see, and I can see it plainly from my property, and maybe from my house, but I don't have a problem with it, because I think the benefits outweigh the potential problems tenfold, a hundredfold. I mean, it was mentioned that a few regions came out against it, but you're all, you know, the scope of solar energy across the United States is huge, and I'm sure you can find a few situations that people had problems with it or didn't play out. But I think the overall grade on solar energy and renewable energy in this country is good. And the other countries we're competing with, China mainly, well, they're just wide-open renewable energy. And if our economy is going to compete with their economy, affordable, cheap energy is, I think, the key. If you look back at the Industrial Revolution, the United States was able to harness our resources and produce energy that other countries got, the United States and Europe. And those two groups rose to the top of the economic scale. And I think you can look at the computer, the technology, that was another revolution. The United States and Asia were the leaders in that, and you can see how the Asian population, I mean, the economy is on the rise. And I think affordable energy is going to be the next big thing. I think the countries that are able to provide the energy they need are the countries that are going to prosper. And, you know, I'd like to see Stanley County be part of it. I went to the meetings years ago when Oakboro was considered, and there was some opposition, but I just wanted to learn about it, and again, I wanted to speak out in favor of it. And so, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain. Any comment or board questions? Is there anyone else out there wishing to speak for or against this project? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, instead of closing the public hearing, I would move to hold the public hearing open until June 11th, pending a conversation about the previous zoning ordinance item.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Swain, second from Commissioner Lauder. Any discussion? Everyone get that motion clear. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you. What we're going to do is hold the public hearing open until the June meeting. We've got a text amendment to consider, and at that point, we'll take action at that meeting.
Question? Will there still be more comment at the next?
Yes, we have the public hearing held open in order to take care of any further comments that are questions that may be needed at that meeting. Thank you. Moving on, item, take a little while to get there, item three, NCD Transportation Project Prioritization Discussion, presenter Dana Stojinky, Rocky River RPO. Good evening, Dana.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me tonight. I'm going to do a brief overview of transportation in Stanley County. This is for information only. And just to sort of refresh you all on how transportation funding for NCDOT plays out in the state. STI, Strategic Prioritization Funding Plan for Transportation Investment is the law of the land, and I'll just go through this quickly. Basically, last summer, we submitted, and we being the Rocky River Planning Organization member governments, Anson, Stanley, and Union Counties, provided projects, and they were basically put in the hopper, and NCDOT calculated their scores, their quantitative scores. And at that point, I guess it was back in March, they were able to tell us, for the statewide mobility pot of money, how many projects everyone in the state would get. And that was about $3.3 billion over a 10-year period. The RPO, the rural areas in general don't get a lot of the statewide mobility, it is very, very congestion-focused in the formula. The only project that our RPO got was an access management project on 74 in Anson County, and that was for about $4.5 million. We did make progress as a whole, the rural communities did make progress. We got very little in the last round, and this round in statewide mobility, we got about 9% of the pot, which is better than like 1%, but we're still working on that piece of it. Bring it forward to what we're dealing with now is the regional impact. And regional impact is the second tier, and the projects in the statewide mobility that did not get funding could potentially cascade down to regional impact. Sometimes that doesn't happen because they're such large projects, they don't have enough money in the regional impact fund to do that. In addition, regional impact has, the RPO and the Division 10, which is our division here in Stanley County, get to basically provide sort of input and points to our projects. You also have that same scenario with the Division Needs Impact. Division Needs Impact, there's more emphasis on local points and Division Local Points as well, and the competition areas are different. Trust me, I did not make up this system, this is, I know this has convoluted, but this is the way the state has decided on doing their transportation investment. All of this feeds into the STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program. It is a 10-year program, starting in 2019 and going, or starting in 19 and going to '29, or '20 to '29, it's adopted in 2019. So, when everyone put their projects into the hopper, back in June, over 1,204 highway projects were submitted totaling $5.4 billion, and in the nine-highway program, $7.4 billion were put into the hopper. Obviously, the state doesn't have that kind of money. Like I said, in that first round, STI, in that first round with state mobility, $3.3 billion was funded. So, these are basically the projects that were funded in that statewide pocket. There was the 48 highway projects, 11 rail projects, and 18 aviation projects. One of those projects was within the Rocky River Rural Planning Organization. So, this is how it breaks out now with the regional and division. So, if you can see, I don't know if you can see my mouse on your screens, but, so, we are regional, we are Region E, so we compete with all of the counties in this light green color. Division 10 is Mecklenburg, Union, Stanley, Anson, and Comberus Counties, and then Division 8 are all the counties, including Moore and Randolph and those counties on the east side of Rocky River. And so, at the regional impact, we have $445 million or so, and then at the Division Needs, we have about $170 million, and that is just Division 10. And I know that sounds like a lot of money, but when you're competing with Charlotte, when one project is, I think it was $230 million, I mean, that's the, you know, that's sort of what we run up against, is, you know, sort of sharing the pot with, you know, the most urban community in the state. The good news is, when we went through the scoring process, just generated the scores via NCDOT and their methodology, that counts to 70% of our regional impact score, we did fairly well. And this is a slide that the folks up at Raleigh produced, and that I cut and pasted on this presentation, and you can see that there's a CSX rail alignment, this is in Anson County, so again, you know, regionally speaking, this is a Popton siding project that scored really well. The Monro bypass scored really well. I'm sorry, did I just say Monro bypass? I apologize. That's funded and should be completed by November of this year. The Wadesboro bypass, it was potentially, you know, it scored well enough that potentially it could get funded. And then you can see down on the list that the US-52 widening north of Norwood did well enough to potentially get funded. And I'm saying potentially because we need Division 10's support in order to make these projects happen. You know, the RPO, you've seen our list, it's, I think, you know, you have that in your packet. We've supported these projects, we have enough points, as they're called, to support our projects. It's a matter of whether we can get Division 10's support, and we've, you know, we've had ongoing discussions with Division 10 over the past four weeks or so, and they have not created their official list yet, so we don't know what, where they stand. This is, these are the projects on our list. So, you can see, you know, they're numbered, but that's not according to their importance, it's just a way to identify them. You can see the first three projects in red, those are funded. One was funded through the pot of money I was talking about before, one was funded through safety money, one was funded through a low-dollar, high-impact fund. So, we've gotten some projects funded off of our sort of wish list. The next three projects, one, two, and three, if we can get Division support, we could actually see those on the ground. And the Norwood project, I mean, the project on Highway 52 scored well because there was a lot of accidents, you know, there were some safety issues going on, and we worked closely with Division 10 to have them come, and they did an analysis, and they're going to do some improvements on that road, so that, hopefully, that safety issue will get some sort of relief. However, you know, this is a $35 million project that, you know, if it's important to you all, I would urge you to reach out to folks to, you know, show your support on that project, or any of these projects. The reason I'm specifically talking about that one particular project for this county is because it really has a chance to get funded. We've also talked extensively with Division 10 about the importance of aviation in this county. We've had them out at the airport, we've talked to them, you know, we had the fire chief and the folks, and when they did the expansion of their training, we had them at Division Office explaining the importance of that program. So, we, you know, they understand how important the airport is, and, you know, I've worked closely with Ken to develop these projects, and David before him, to help, to try to help get funding through NCDOT for our aviation projects. BikePed, there's a range of projects in Stanley County. We have projects in Albemarle, we have projects in some of the smaller communities, including Stanfield, as well as Meisenheimer. And again, these are important projects. We don't know, again, we don't know whether, this is not a regional tier, this would be Division tier, so we don't know yet how these would shake out. We probably won't know until later, probably in late June. Ultimately, our schedule is that the RPO Board is meeting June 14th, so that's our next meeting, and that's going to be So, that's our next meeting, and that's going to be in Union County. It's a really important meeting because we're going to not only have a public hearing about this, but we're going to be, you know, Division 10 will be there. Hopefully, they will share all of their point distributions. We will be, our TAC will be voting on whether or not, you know, we move our projects forward. And ultimately, we will know probably by the fall how, you know, all of our projects shake out. But it's sort of a process that we have to go through over the summer to get it all, push everything forward. So, with that said, you know, here's my contact information. That website has all of this information, a lot of information about the process methodologies and so forth on that. And again, the public hearing is June 14th, 6:00 PM, right before the RPO's elected officials meeting. And that's going to be down at the Ag Center in Monroe. The only other things I can sort of comment on is, I have had detailed discussion with our board members. So, NC DOT has a board member for our area. Tony Lethrup is a very nice guy. I met with him last week, and I went through all of this with him as well. And, you know, I'm happy to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Any questions, board members? See none?
I do, Chairman.
Commissioner Lauder, go ahead.
We had the DOT in here talking about road maintenance. And they gave us some information, but not a lot of hope. And I continue to have citizens to talk about how awful our road maintenance, terrible roads that we have that aren't being maintained. And I don't know what it's going to take, or who it's going to take, but Stanley County needs some of our tax dollars back to take care of our roads, because they are not being taken care of. That's a statement, it's not a question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment?
Dana?
Sure.
If we were to potentially draft a resolution and approve it at our June 11th meeting, would that be in time, or do we need to do something prior to? Because I know you, we're meeting on the 14th.
We are meeting on the 14th. I imagine, I mean, you all, you know, can do what you feel is right, but I know internally they're moving pretty fast.
Okay. So, a phone call would be better?
I, you know, I would recommend you advocating for your project as, you know, as you see fit.
All right.
Because there's a lot of projects out there, and, you know, I just wouldn't want ours to get lost in the shuffle. So, they have a very specific methodology. So, I will say this. They have, and so I've seen Division's methodology, and I've seen how projects have ranked out. The reason I wanted to come tonight is because I wanted to make sure you understood that this project is not on their radar.
Who was, who are the individuals that we need to speak to?
So, Scott Cole is our Division 10 engineer, and Tony Lethrup is our board member. So, those two gentlemen in particular, and I can, Andy has those names and numbers, but I can happily forward them tomorrow morning. And so, that distribute to whoever, you know, would like to reach out to those folks.
Our board members, is that a Governor Cooper appointee? Or was that?
I believe he may be the, we had two. Tracy Dotson took another job, and she, and she was, I believe she was appointed by McCrory. And Tony is appointed by the current administration, I believe.
Okay. County manager?
I was just going to say, I think the best thing would be for Dana to share the contact information for Scott Cole and the DOT board members, so we can pass that along to the board members. I believe the phone calls from an individual contact from commissioners that are elected officials is going to carry more weight with them than anything else that you may do. So, I think it's important to reach out and let your feelings be known.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you Dana.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And ladies.
Item four, EDC Board Appointment. Presenter Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We put this agenda item on your, for your consideration this evening, really just to, one, bring it to your attention that we had a resignation from EDC Board Member Ryan McIntyre, who's District 5. And so, we're requesting that you appoint someone. There was one application that we had in the file from previous, and we've included that. And the board may take action this evening, but really, we put this on there really more for information to kind of get you thinking about this item and reappointing someone to that District 5 seat. And it would be a, the unexpired term, it was a two-year unexpired term. So, they're almost one year into it. We, you all appointed those at your, I believe your August of 2018 meeting. And so, you've got roughly, roughly a year left on that two-year term. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Any comment from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this at the current time.
Okay. Got a motion to table this until the next meeting?
Second.
Second from, I believe I got Commissioner Effer, I believe. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item five. Loaded up tonight. Recommended budget presentation, this is our 2018-2019 County Manager Recommended Budget Presentation, and we'll give Andy a minute or so to get ready. Would everyone like to take a, about a two or three minutes? We're going to take a very, very short recess. Be back momentarily. All right, folks, we're going to give everybody another minute or so to get to where they're going, and we'll get back to business.
You'd like to.
Some money.
Item five, fiscal year 2018-19 Recommended Budget Presentation. Presenter Andy Lucas. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to stand before you this evening and present the recommended, managers' recommended operating budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Go ahead and get started. Just in your packet, you've got a, you've got a book. It provides the transmittal letter, which provides a lot of details about the recommended budget and sort of some of the thought process behind some of the recommendations. There's a quick one-page recommended budget in brief. A lot of those bullet points I sort of pulled out and put in your board bulletin last Friday. And so, if you read that, you kind of have an idea of where this is headed. There's a couple of spreadsheets in there that provide total county dollars, or total dollars and county dollars. There's actually a property tax receipt in there for the recommended budget that basically breaks down what people are paying for with their local property tax. It has a spreadsheet in there. It's got the department head requested and the managers' recommended enhancements. And we look at enhancements as you have your current level of services, which we're providing today. So, anything above and beyond that current level of services and enhancement. You also have the line item revenue and expense details by department in your book, and as well as a recommended fee schedule. This year, the recommended fee schedule, any changes either proposed or recommended are highlighted in yellow, so you can quickly scan through your fee schedule and identify those that were either proposed to increase or were both proposed and recommended. So, the bottom line is there's no recommended tax rate increase. This, if the board adopts this budget, or some variation thereof, with, without, without a tax increase, it would be the 12th consecutive year this board has adopted the 67 cent tax rate, which if you look around us in neighboring counties, that's just, that's pretty, that's a, that's a lot of stability for our businesses and our citizens. It increases funding for education. It develops a plan for addressing employer retention and recruitment, focuses on the board-approved year-one capital improvement priorities. And it's, there's several technology enhancements to help increase the efficiency of our operations. If you look at the requested budget versus the recommended budget, the requested budget are those items that departments sought, and what they asked for in terms of request, and what they felt like they needed. That would be a $66.5 million budget. The recommended budget is 64.1. It's about a 5 cent difference on the tax rate, almost $2.4 million from what was requested by departments and non-departments, you know, those entities that we fund, community college, school system, et cetera. So, just a multi-year budget illustration, the 64.1 million dollar total budget we're recommending is a little less than a million dollar increase over last year, about 1.4% increase in growth, which I feel is fairly moderate and I think reasonable. 44.5 million of that is county dollars, local property taxes, sales tax. Our assessed evaluate, our assessed evaluation for your real property, your business, personal property, motor vehicles, 4.8 billion. That's about $108 million increase, 2.3%, which is one of the larger increases we've seen non-revaluation years in terms of our assessed valuation, which I think speaks to the fact that we have seen some growth, significantly more growth in the residential sector than commercial, which we'd like to see that trend change and see a little more commercial growth to help balance that. And then fund balance appropriations, about 1.97 million. 1.3 million of that, 2/3 of it, is tied to one-time capital outlay, specifically, a lot of those items being those year-one capital improvement items. And just as context, this year, the board, our adopted budget had 1.4 million, 1.4 million dollars appropriated in fund balance. And so, it's about a half million dollars more, but there are, you know, when you look at all your capital improvement items and the ability to one-time fund those, it certainly makes up for that. So, education, Stanley County Schools, recommending $154,000 increase, 1.5% to their current expense. The $500,000 in that additional sales tax money that we break out, that a lot of counties just throw into current expense, but we break it out for a reason, because if we ever get audited by the state, the state has specifically said that money is to be used for economic development in schools. We want to be able to clearly show where we're using those dollars. And so, we tie that too. Unfortunately, when the, when Reese, when the state, or you look in the website, and you look at our per people funding, they're just looking at that current expense line on them. It's not accounting for that half a million dollars that's sitting there that's going to current expense. But we tie it so that we can clearly show the transparency of how those sales tax dollars are being used. It's got 241,000 teacher supplement pay grant. That's an additional $5,000 that we're proposing. And that was consistent with the school system's request for the 241. Actually, they asked like for 240,580, and so we just made it 241. It also has $300,000 in additional capital outlay. About 100,000 of that is just growth in the sales tax base. The other $200,000 we're recommending be used from fund balance. And that really is fund balance that we've, that we've gained because their sales tax has been higher than what we had budgeted in years past. And so, that, you know, we've technically been holding it, and I'm recommending that we appropriate it. So, overall, about $455,000 increase in the school funding. The community college, the same 1.5% increase in current expense for them, it's roughly $18,600. Also recommending $210 in capital outlay, which is about a $50,000 increase in their capital outlay to help them with some deferred maintenance items on campus. So, where does the money go? Mainly, if you look at it, three categories get 75% of the funding, 48.2 million. And that's education, health and human services, and public safety. 83% of the items in your budget are mandated, meaning you don't have a choice on funding those. You do have some choice on how much you fund them, but you don't have a choice of whether you fund them. Jails, debt, DSS, EMS, sheriff, public schools. So, you can kind of see where that is. Education, when you look at local dollars in terms of just county funding, I mean, you know, over a third is allocated to, to education, with a lion's share of that being the Stanley County School System. One of the items, looking at human capital and our employees, I know this is something the board's talked about, is, you know, how do we become more ability to retain our existing employees, but also attract new employees as it's getting more competitive out there in the job market? You can kind of see our turnover rate, and our turnover rate has ticked up. So, what we're recommending, or what I'm recommending, is a 1.5% COLA for all employees. And I'm tying that COLA in with a, basically a step increase in our pay plan. And so, grade and step, and that'd be, you could, you could say that's 3%. That 3% would be for all of our non-paramedic employees, so the lion's share of our organization. The reason I'm not doing, recommending that for the paramedic employees, they would get the 1.5% COLA. But we adjusted their salary significantly when we went from 24 to 72. I mean, way more than 3%. And so, I don't feel, I think, I feel like doing that again really is not justified. I mean, they, you know, their, their schedules changed, the number of hours they worked dramatically decreased, and we kept them whole at their, at their salary. So, their hourly rates went up fairly significantly. I'm also proposing to continue the wellness clinic for all our employees, as well as continue health insurance gain sharing, if we have anything to share, which hasn't been the case the last few years due to, due to high claims. So, major budgetary expenditure changes, the increase, that 3% grade and step adjustment, 488,000, increase in the county share of health insurance premiums, increase for the capital outlay for schools, that 1.5% COLA across the organization, have to annualize the merit that was done mid-year this year, HVAC controls at the courthouse, current expense funding for the schools, that's the increase for the commons, for the roof replacements. And that won't address all the roofs here, but it'll really help us. And then there was a reduction in school debt service payments. So, if you look at our capital outlay, those items sort of between $1,000 and $10,000. $53,000 was requested, recommending 49. On those items that were $10,000 and larger, we had about 1.6 million requested and recommending 1.4. And there's just a reminder of your five-year capital improvement plan that the board approved at the, your retreat. And you can see a lot of your light blue items, the fifth radio emergency tower, the Riverstone Park, old jail roof replacement, courthouse HVAC, GPS software integration, and the commons north end roofs. There's significant one-time dollars in the budget to address these, these items. I'm recommending that we do set aside, I think, $75,000 to get the site development and the design for the site development done for the fifth emergency radio tower, and then the funding for the old jail roof, the roof replacement, the courthouse, the GPS integration, and a lion's share of the commons, about 140,000 is also included. So, it really helps move, move you forward on your year-one capital improvement items. And then, I'm also recommending for the base, EMS base, 75,000 to get the design started on that. So, not recommending that we necessarily pull the trigger on it, but get the design started, so that we'll be ready in year two of your capital improvement plan. So, just a quick summary on revenue, fund balance appropriated increases that .9 percentage points, sales tax is up .6, property tax as a whole is up .6. But overall, our revenues are pretty consistent with where they have been in previous years as a, as a percentage of total. So, outside agency, we had one outside agency request funding, and that's really mandated by, and stipulated by the general, the local law, the session law that dictates us funding CVB. But that additional 25,000 is that special tourism grant that we were going to do for, tied to specifically when we hit certain thresholds for events in terms of heads and beds for that event. And so, that additional 25,000 is tied to that, that initiative. Other fee changes, the household solid waste hauling expense goes up with inflation. Capital items, I've got a $21,000 compactor that needs to be replaced, and just the general employee COLAs and merit annualization. We're recommending that that fee go from $75 to $80 to help cover that. And we try to minimize, you know, that we try to tie that fee as closely as possible to the expense and revenue. The only thing that we, that's not funded, that sort of is, where there is some property tax money in the solid waste department in terms of revenue expenses, is to offset that household hazardous waste event that anybody in the county can go to. And so, I think it's appropriate that, you know, $20,000 or $30,000 of tax money is being used to help offset that, since everyone in the county can utilize that event, that household hazardous waste event. There's some other fee increases for EMS, inspections, SCUSA, environmental health and health and dental, and those are all highlighted in your, in yellow in your fee schedule that's in the back of your packet. Nothing too out of the ordinary. EMS is just, you know, fluctuating. We haven't done any increases, and we're just trying to keep up with Medicaid and the insurance, making sure that we're maximizing our revenue there. making sure that we're maximizing our revenue there. Inspections, just looked at a couple of items that they'd like consideration on. SCUSA in terms of just making sure we're recouping our fully allocated cost and certainly we're not recommending what would truly be the fully allocated cost, but increasing it some. So, you'll get a sense of those, but I don't think any of them are, will create any real concern or just, none of them are significant. I mean, they're fairly reasonable, I believe. The volunteer fire districts, none of them requested an increase in their fire tax. This will be my 10th year here and that may have happened one other time. I don't really remember that. Usually they're asking for some increase and that hasn't happened. I did increase their, the first responder subsidy by $4,200 and that's obviously being split among 12 or 13 of them, but I do feel like we needed to increase that a little bit to help offset some of that cost. In terms of your enterprise funds, I hear all the time, we want water and I pay taxes and your tax money, folks' tax money is not tied to our water and sewer services. Those are enterprise funds and we run those, in terms of grants and loans and paying debt service and the user fees are what pay for those. And so, tax dollars aren't going into your water and sewer services. But we're recommending, they requested a one-and-a-half percent rate increase, recommending a 2% rate increase. City of Albemarle supposedly is not going to raise rates. Norwood is raising rates, but I think with a 2%, given the volume of water that we purchase with them, that will be okay. I'm also proposing about $195,000 go into seed funding for these smaller sort of community projects that we're trying to take water into some smaller areas and try to get water. So, that funding, and Donna was going to elaborate this when she comes and talks to you in Budget Workshop about how we can potentially leverage that $195,000 to be able to take on some projects and get that started. So, the 2% rate increase, you can see that, what impact that has on the water and sewer rates and the Greater Baden, Piney Point, Stanley utilities. The only one of those that's increasing in terms of budget is your West Stanley wastewater treatment plant and a lot of that is tied to the fact that we're going to have debt coming on as that project, that rehabilitation project down there matures and we anticipate that our debt service will start on that project in 1920. So, we're getting that budget prepared for that debt service. The other enterprise funds, a fairly significant increase in the airport. That would be the largest appropriation of county money that, since I've been here, about 30% increase, but most of that's tied to one-time hangar improvements. So, there's, the T-hangers out there need some attention and we really need to get those fixed up and addressed as well as some lighting out there to enhance customer service. And also, we need to, there's an opportunity to put, to transition one hangar that's kind of being used as a maintenance shop into, back into, putting that back on so someone can actually use it for a plane and then taking another area that was more office space and renovating that into a shop. And so, the funding for that is included in the recommended budget. And then, the 911, an increase about 4.3% using about $20,000 in fund balance and that helps to offset part of the radio system debt service from the 911 fund. So, the budget in brief, 12th consecutive year of 67 cent tax rate, 5,000 additional funding for teacher supplements, 154, and additional recurring operational expense funding for the schools, 300,000 in capital outlay, 68,000 for the community college, 50,000 of that being capital improvement. Targeting that funding for your year-one CIP projects, which includes initiating the planning for the EMS base and that fifth tower site preparation. Really focusing tectology on DSS, EMS and central administration, trying to work on an agenda management system so that we can, our agendas can be put together in a more timely manner as well as go paperless so that we don't have to print as many agendas out and y'all can use tablets to be able to receive your agenda. And so, we really like to project forward. It's long overdue. Working on employee recruitment intention and continuing our support of economic development. So, just in summary, one-third of all your local property tax revenue is going to the schools. Emphasis on, really places an emphasis on recruitment and retention. We need to address salaries to be more competitive with our neighbors. When we looked at the salaries, we looked at Rowan and Davidson and Anson and Haywood Counties and we looked at their salaries and any place where we could map positions that were similar to our positions and any place where we could get two counties and we averaged those, we were on par. We were about 4.2% below the average of those other counties when you averaged them. And so, there are jobs where we were above, there were jobs where we were low, but on average, we were 4.2. So, I think that aligns fairly well with the one-step increase for every position and being at 4.5% increase when you look at the one-and-a-half percent COLA and the 3% grade and step adjustment. Funding for those CIP items and again, no tax increase. Just in terms of budget calendar, June 11th will be the budget public hearing at 6:00. We need to identify workshops either the May 21st. We have a, we'll recess the meeting this evening and we have a joint meeting with the school board on May 21st, next Monday at 5:30 here in this room. And we could set meetings at some point during that meeting or we can set them at the June 11th meeting. Some recommended dates are the 7th, the 12th and the 19th, and I know the 7th is before the 11th, but I think you can talk, start talking about your, the budget before we have the public hearing. I don't think that's necessarily, you know, you don't have to wait to have the public hearing to begin to have discussions about the budget. So, those are some recommended dates. You all can certainly have the discretion to set those as you wish and then we would tentatively like the board to adopt on Thursday, June 21st. And I want to stop there and thank you and thank all the department heads for all their hard work in putting together what I believe is a reasonable and sustainable budget and see if there are any questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any comments or questions from board members? I've got some questions later on, but thank you for, again, for 12th year in a row of maintaining our tax rate. Give Andy a breather, but item six, fiscal year 2018-19, recommended bi-weekly health and dental insurance premiums for employees, dependent coverage and retirees. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, we have the recommended dependent care premiums, the employees' share of those. You have those in here. No changes to dental. We are recommending an increase to our employee children, employee spouse and family rates and those are consistent with the rates that Blue Cross and Blue Shield recommended to help shore up our health insurance, our self-funded health insurance fund. So, we're, we would ask for the board's consideration and approval of those this evening so that we can start the process of open enrollment and getting information to employees in early June for those sessions. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, we've got the information in front of us. Any questions for Andy Lucas? Board?
Chairman.
Commissioner Efferd.
I make a motion we adopt the recommended bi-weekly health and dental insurance premiums for all employee dependent care.
Got a motion from Commissioner Efferd. Second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item seven, consent agenda. I think everyone's had time to review that. Is there? What's the pleasure of the board? Got a motion from Commissioner Lawhan, second from Commissioner Swain. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, public comment. I did not have anyone to sign up. Is there anyone out there that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we'll do board comments. Commissioner Lauder. Commissioner Efferd.
I got two quick ones and I'm going to keep them short. I had a senior advisory meeting last week and two things that just really struck out. The SHIP program, it's senior health insurance information where volunteers, basically they help the seniors with their, I think, Part D expenses and they save, they saw, the SHIP council saw 959 people and saved a combined total of $1,000,696 to those folks in Stanley County. And also, the tax aid, the AARP tax aid program, we're all volunteers. They see people usually February 1st through April 15th for two days a week. They save Stanley County residents, 450 people, combined $45,000 in tax preparation. I just thought those two numbers were huge, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Efferd. Commissioner Morgan.
No comment.
Commissioner Lawhan.
I do want to applaud our county manager, Andy Lucas. He was at the most recent Central Island Council of Government meeting, did a presentation on the analysis that the COG helped Stanley County with on our senior center needs and Andy did a terrific job in his presentation and I applaud you. Thank you.
Vice Chairman McIntyre. I'll come back to Commissioner Swain.
No comment.
All right, no comment from myself. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work and request the board consider a motion to recess until May 21st at 5:00 PM with a joint meeting with the school board here in this meeting.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Swain to recess until May 21st at 5:30. Second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. We are in recess.